Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM. We have a full dais calling this meeting to order. We will be going into executive session on the following item. Item 2A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding solid waste franchise agreements. It is 5:30 and we are in executive session. It is 6:19 and we are out of executive session and back into regular session and we will be taking an action. I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I make the motion and council direct the city manager to survey residents regarding waste management preferences in service prior to implementing an RFP for competitive bids.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Council, we're saying, we're asking, directing the city manager to do a survey of our citizens in preparation for the solid waste RFP. Are you clear what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. It is 6:20 and we are going to go into recess. We will return at 6:30 and start our normally regularly scheduled meeting. 6:20 and we are in recess. It is 6:30 on Tuesday, October 11th. We have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Council, we're on the top of page two and we have two wonderful young people to lead us in our pledges tonight. We have Cannon Cole. Cannon, if you'll step forward and turn around so I can talk about you and they can see you. Cannon is in fourth grade and his favorite subject is math and I almost have him talked into being an engineer, but unfortunately you'll notice that he's wearing maroon, so I'm working on that part. Catherine Alexander, if she'll step forward. Catherine is also in fourth grade. She also likes math. She's also thinking about being an engineer, she just doesn't know it yet, but she too has picked a school with maroon and did not really want to talk about football games this weekend, so we know where her family is from. So, both of these young people have been in the Mina Elementary PE posse for second grade, third grade, and fourth grade, and Catherine explained to me that two of the main things that they do is learn how to be respectful and treat each other with dignity and that means I think we should all be in the Mina Elementary PE posse if that is some of the things that they're learning. I'm very, very happy that they're joining us today and I'm appreciative that their family brought them. It is wonderful to see our young people engaged in the process. If everyone will please rise, they will lead us in the pledges.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give them a round of applause. You guys stay here. Colin's gonna get your picture. Stay right there. Thank you very much, Mr. Cole and Ms. Alexander. Great job. Good job. Catherine's dad told her there were no less than 50,000 people watching, so she's pretty excited about that. If you will remain standing, we'll have our invocation, which is being led by Derek Brown. He is the next generation pastor at Calvary Baptist Church and he explained to me that's 18 years old or below. Pastor Brown.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the opportunity you've given us to gather again here tonight. Lord, I ask that you be with the council, be with the mayor, be with the attorneys as business is done. God, I ask that our time tonight would be pleasing and productive and God, as things are brought up, that we would be wise in how we approach them and allow us to work together as a team to continue to move Bastrop forward. God, we give this time to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
You may all be seated. Thank you so much, Pastor Brown. All right, council, we're moving on to the next item, which is the mayor's report and it was not in the packet, the TML conference last week. I wasn't able to get it done in time for the packet, but before we get started on the report, I would like to send out a special shout out to my husband. Tonight is our 19th wedding anniversary. Here we are. Thank you for helping me celebrate my wedding anniversary, so I am very grateful that...
I feel your pain.
Pardon?
I feel your pain.
Yes, that when I was gone in July, she was here for her 34th wedding anniversary, so we know where we are. Some of you know and some of you don't know, he is absolutely the reason and the person who talked me into running and I really appreciate all the support that he's given me through all of this. So, with that, there's a ton of pictures. There's a lot that's happened. Our last council meeting was on September 20th, so there's a lot of things that have happened. In the upper left, you'll see several shots from the music festival. There's our wonderful Collin Guerra was singing with Haley Tuck. They did a great job at Copper Shot. We got the folks from CC and Wine and also the folks from Neighbors and I really hope that if you did not go to the music festival, that you'll consider going next year. It was just a great time. We really enjoyed it. Just below that, you'll see a group of board and commission members that we did training for and appreciative of our city attorney for providing that training and bless their hearts, they were in training one Monday and then we fed them the next Monday. So, that's a picture of at the interim, city manager Joe, but Mr. Job and I with the awards for the folks that were rolling off of the boards and that was also the first day of work for our city manager Sylvia Correo and she not only worked a long day, not only got sworn in, not only went to the board and commission banquet, but I also did the, oh yeah, I was kind of planning on you talking. So, she said a few words and we are very appreciative of that. If you go just to the right of that, you'll see me doing one of my most favorite things, which is reading to my friends at the city library. They asked great questions and we went through Brown Bear, Brown Bear, What Do You See? And those little kids, it was not the first time they had heard that book and they enjoyed it and I enjoyed them. We also did Bastrop Night Out and the picture in the middle, you'll see all of us before we broke up. There were seven different parks and Kevin and I, we won, right? Because we went to four. I think most everybody else went to three, but not that I'm competitive, but Kevin and I went to four. There's a group of us at Fisherman's Park and we made, we made four of them and then we also had the Boobash and that's the pictures in the upper right-hand corner. It's not my fault that there's not a picture of city manager and I doing the flash mob to Thriller, but we were there and we did participate. We had a great time. There was a ton of people out at Fisherman's Park and that was a lot of fun. Council, we all spent most of the week together last week in San Antonio and if you go to the lower right-hand corner, Colin, this was the closest picture I had. We don't have everybody, but that was getting ready for the opening session. I think there, I'll have pictures maybe at one of the next meetings then we got all of us all together, but the Texas, excuse me, the Texas downtown, slide down, Colin, and zoom in on that. We were thrilled. Several of us went to the Texas downtown presentation and if Colin zooms in on that picture of Samai on her bike, you will see that Bastrop was featured during the, the picture was from the Juneteenth parade and it was neat to see Bastrop focused not only on the session, but they were also a part of the display that they had in the exhibit hall. So, it was, it's such a great picture of our downtown and was really pleased that the recreation center's bikes were featured in that. So, a lot of fun things going on, had a great time at the TML conference and really, really pleased that everybody on council was able to go. Okay, Colin, we can go to the next page. I did go to the World of Dreams event on October 8th and today I did all of those things I was supposed to do. If you go to the next page, I'll be at the CAPCOG Executive Committee meeting tomorrow. The Bastrop Fitness Center is having their ribbon cutting and I want to also call out that on October 14th, Compass Rose, the new charter school that's there in front of the colony, they're having their grand opening and I have been invited and plan to attend that on Friday and you'll see that we have a BDC Board meeting on Monday, the 17th and we will be back together for our second meeting in October on October 25th and that afternoon we will be at the Fourth Annual Women's Leadership Luncheon that is being put on by the Family Crisis Center. And that is the end of our mayor's report. Let's go move to council member reports. Councilmember Lee.
Good evening. So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of time passed since the last meeting. I too went to the music festival. I believe there was a homecoming parade mixed in between there and the homecoming game that I went to. I also attended my first library board meeting yesterday and back on planning and zoning as the liaison. I had to remember my place there a little bit on that day. There was the cultural arts social at the Opera House. I got invited to do another grand opening of Gravity out at Hunter's Crossing. We did Bastrop Night Out. I think all of the locations ended up having a really great turnout and I want to thank all of the chairs of those different events for chairing it, especially at Delgado. Maria Staiton was our chair and she and Carrie Foster kind of took it and ran. I did actually start the fire on the barbecue pit, believe it or not, my son, who challenged me and I flipped a couple of burgers and then I went and had fun for the rest of the evening. I went to the World of Dreams event as well. Rondie Shea's a classmate of mine, since birth and we graduated high school together, so it was good to see him come and give back. And then, of course, we went to TML, went to some great workshops and can't wait to talk with the mayor and city manager about some of the, we all kind of went to different workshops and kind of learned different things, so I can't wait to debrief and talk about maybe some ideas we can incorporate here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I really enjoyed TML. I think it was a great opportunity for us to do some team building and it was very valuable for that and got a lot of really good information from a lot of the sessions I went to and I too look forward to our, to see how many of our big ideas make it to the podium one of these days.
I never know if staff's excited or if they're like, oh, Lord, they're off at another conference, because we come back loaded with ideas. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Well, I hate to sound like a broken record, but TML was a lot of fun and I think we did a great job by dividing up the different courses and everybody kind of went to different ones, so we can kind of get as much information as we could and that was pretty much all. I worked the music festival, so I didn't get to hear, but they did do a great job for the kids event, so that's everything for me.
Excellent. Councilmember Crouch?
Ditto on the TML. It was, I always liked going there because I see a lot of friends from all over Houston, Dallas, and then always Lockhart, seemed like I bumped into a lot of people there, but it's, it's a good education time for us and then also a great time for the council members to visit and hang out together and then also Sylvia, and I don't want to leave, leave her out. The other thing was the Sarah Swearingen ceremony, so I'm, I'm glad that we've got the city manager on board and did it so quickly and we didn't have a lag and thank you, Trey, for being interim, so we didn't fall apart while we were waiting for everything. So, that's awesome on Trey's part, very dedicated employee. And then the boards banquet, I'm always amazed at how many people in Bastrop volunteer for boards. It's just to see that many people in one room and they're all almost volunteers is, is pretty amazing. And then the national night out was, was nice too, because we, we just made three, we didn't make four parks. We didn't drive as fast, I guess, but it was good to see the people in all the parks and then visit with them for a very short time before we had to go to the next one, but it was good to see everybody participating and, and out at their park, so that was good.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, so I want to share something about the TML conference. I learned that when you walk through the exhibit floor with Councilperson Crouch, she will get stuck at the very first booth and chat with them and then when you're down at the far end of the building and you turn back and look, he's still at the first booth, which is why he and I only made it to three parks at Bastrop Night Out, because he was talking to everybody. But besides those things, boards and commission orientation and banquet, the Bastrop Music Festival, Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs meeting, and the Cultural Arts Committee meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirkland. We're, we're out and about and we enjoy getting feedback and appreciate all of our dedicated citizens. City manager, we're on item 5C.
Looks like that worked. Sounds like it's working. All right. City managers' report. Well, effective today and it isn't in the packet, hopefully we can bring the PowerPoint up, Colin. So, before this slide though, the burn ban did go into effect today at 4 o'clock and it does go through October 24th. So, please, please, please be very cognizant of what you are burning or attempting to burn. Got some feedback. October 14th, we are having the Pink Party, which is this Friday at Bob Bryant Park. So, free hot dogs and drinks, breast cancer awareness, bring your dancing shoes, because I hear there's going to be a lot of dancing. Other events, October 17th, BISD Pathways Youth Center Day and the mayor alluded to October 25th, the Women's Luncheon Leadership put on by the Family Crisis Center. Our very own Rebecca ACM will emcee the event, so we're looking forward to that. We have some new hires, obviously. I, as the city manager, Philip Wales, water wastewater technician, Haley, police records technician, and Sasha Weir, police officer. We do have a great number of vacancies that we're filling, so hopefully we will get to the point where that slide is a little bit longer to begin filling some of the holes. And the testament that Bastrop is such a great place to work is look at those anniversaries for those employees. I mean, 22 years here, that says something about the staff and the camaraderie and the teamwork that you built here and I'm excited to join that team. And then utility billing updates. Obviously, there's a womp womp in the report. We did have a little glitch in the system and so the bills were delayed by a few days and because of that, we are not going to issue any penalties or late fees on the month's bills. Those issues are being resolved, so we don't anticipate to have that issue again, but the portal is open and customers are able to make payments. And then downtown Bastrop Recycles, this is part of the Main Street program. The new trash cans have shipped and they will be here at the end of October and they should be installed along Main Street before November 15th, which is Texas Recycles Day. So, super excited about that. There's a lot of initiatives along recycling where we can get really creative and let them become actual art installations by the nonprofits, et cetera, et cetera, so super excited about that program. And then on the horizon in terms of for me and you, is we talked about a strategic plan at TML and an annual work plan and I really want to make sure that council and staff were in alignment to what we can do and that we're all rowing in the same boat and that also includes the EDC and our, and Visit Bastrop and our other partners. I want to make sure that we are all doing what's in the best interest of Bastrop to keep the burden for the residents at a minimum, so that we're not actually tripping over each other. Those are just efficiencies. I am looking forward to the creation of a development advisory group. I know we've got some pinch points and some pain points, so I am looking to the council members to get that meeting on the calendar and I'm more than happy to attend and get some of that low-hanging fruit out of the way. And in the meantime, I'm attending the committee and community meetings to get to know everybody and get to know what's on the agenda and what their work plans are, because sometimes those aren't in alignment and we need to bring those into alignment, so. And then upcoming agenda items, you have your standard October 25th, there's some muds, there's a transportation impact fee study that's going to be critical. More importantly, we are building, you do have an agenda software that hasn't been completely built out, so we're going to take a little bit of a step backwards and create that agenda at a glance and that's going to be in a folder for you and us, so that we build agendas that aren't overly burdensome or long or efficient and we can get business done without tripping on one another. So, look in your mailboxes for that link here coming up, hopefully by the end of the month. And that's what I have. And last but not least, thank you, thank you, thank you for such a warm welcome. Really, this is an absolutely awesome community with an even greater staff. I, I can only hope that they will allow me to help them just get even better.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We're glad to have you on board and looking forward to all of us working together. All right, council, we don't have any work sessions or briefing, so we're moving on to item number seven, 7A, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending August 31st, which feels like a long, long time ago. Ms. Waldron.
Good evening, mayor and council. This will be short and sweet. As usual, our revenue, we're exceeding forecast by 4% in the general fund, sales tax is almost 8% over forecast, 15% over last year. Development fees have actually kind of caught up a little bit with the forecast, so we're kind of right in line with the forecast now and so that is all looking good. The only fund that's really behind the forecast is our impact fees as we speak of each month and that's just based on the estimates that were made at the beginning of the year and we are looking good in all expenses and all funds. If you have any questions for me?
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Sometimes I try to find a question and I, your reports are so great that I'm like, okay, dig for something, but I can't find anything. Thank you for making them so clear for me.
Good job. Very much appreciate it. All right, councils, we're moving on to citizens' comments and I have one person signed up, well, two people, but you get one slot, signed up for citizen comments, Stephen and Stacy Fober. If you will please come forward and state your name and address. You will have three minutes.
My husband couldn't be here. I'm Stacy Fober. Address is 123 Briar Forest Drive, just down the street. So, I have, so I'm just going to kind of read it. I have some copies for everybody too. I'm interested in purchasing some county-owned property. I have the numbers here in order to build a single-family dwelling. These properties are part of Pine Forest Unit 6. After talking with the county tax assessor's office, these properties are tied with the city slated for possible development. However, I would like the city to exclude these properties from the Pine Forest 6 development and release them for the county to sell due to the following reasons. If you look at the map, these properties are close to other residential homes. It's just like right behind my sister. That's kind of why we singled those out and it's surrounded by properties owned by local residents, so it's not anywhere in the huge development area that I think is slated for that. It's across the road on Briar Forest. The dump, if you go look at it, it's like a dumping ground for broken limbs and debris and lawn clippings. A lot of people just dump it there because there's residential around there. It's really adjacent to deeper viens that run along there, so developing would be really hard. They're like 12-foot deep ravines that run alongside those and I'll kind of give you pictures here. And the road to the property goes all the way through to connect Briar Forest and Connaught Drive. It's not paved yet, but it could be with development, so I'm just going to...
If you'll give those to the city secretary, because it wasn't an item on the agenda, we can't interact with you about it, but if you'll give that to her, she'll make sure that it gets distributed.
Yeah, there's copies of everything in there, some pictures and things like that, so I still have a minute, so I'm going to kind of...
Keep going, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, we moved here to Bastrop and we, we live like a few houses away from my sister and we love it. Our kids get to walk back and forth, but Briar Forest is getting really busy. We just had our mailbox just plowed over the other day and, and it was just like, what if it wasn't my kids? And we love our kids to walk back and forth, so we really would like to purchase that property, so we could walk through our yards. We want to, we love Bastrop. We've visited here like every summer for like 10 years and we love it and we finally were able to move here. So, we just would love to make this our forever place and I know that Pine Forest is slated for development, which should be great. I think it'd be great for the community, but this really, if you see this area and if you go look at it, it really is just like this little piece surrounded by homes and things like that, so. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else signed up for citizen comments?
No, mayor.
All right, council, we're moving on to the next page. We'll be on the top of page three. We're on the consent agenda. Does anybody want anything pulled off of the consent agenda? Does anybody in the audience want an item pulled off of the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you would please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 9A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the 20th, 2022 regular meeting. Item 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-94 of the city council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor of Sylvia Correo to place one of the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Item 9C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2022-26 of the city council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Fee Schedule, Article A 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, Sections A 13.02.002, Waste Water Service Charge and A 13.02.004, Water Service Charge as attached in Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Repillar, Severability, Providing for an Effective Date, Codification, and Proper Notice and Meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Council?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland. Yes.
Thank you, council. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Council, we're going to move to page four. We've got some of our favorite consultants and we're trying to save money for our tax dollars, so we're going to go to item 10D, consider action to approve resolution number R 2022-89 of the city council of the City of Bastrop, authorizing proceeding with issuance of certificates of obligation and further directing the publication of notice of intention to issue City of Bastrop, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Ms. Waldron.
Hi. I have our financial advisor, Dan Wegmiller, here and also our bond counsel, Bartford, and so if you have any questions, I'm just going to do an overview and then I'm going to have Dan come up here and do his part of the presentation, but we are looking at issuing 57 million in bond debt. A big chunk of that, 44 million, is our water and wastewater projects and I know that some of you remember when we were talking about starting these large projects, we were wanting to issue the bonds as we need the funds. We don't want to issue them early. We don't want to hold on to money and start bond payments if we're not there with the projects yet, so this is another step in being fiscally responsible with when we issue these bonds. There's also a 13 million general fund bond debt that's also being issued and that was explained in the budget book as far as what those projects would cover. There's drainage and streets that, that are listed for that, for those. This is just the issuance timeline and... This is just the issuance timeline, and I'll go ahead and let Dan come up here, and he will cover this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you. The timeline is pretty straightforward, we've gone through the issuance process, as you noted, different times in the past, but the whole point of this item is to give the notice of intent in the newspaper to notify of what projects you're taking on. That will run its course. We will have a rating call probably the week of November 14th, just to update the rating analyst on what the projects are, what the status of the financial condition of the city is, along with management changes that have taken place, just update them on where you all stand. We will also then post the offering document, plan to have the sale, bring those results back to you on December 13th for your action that evening, and then close on January 10th, and that's when the funds will be available for projects.
Excellent. Council, any questions? Some of you, this is your first bond obligation. They're pretty awesome, they follow the law, that's what we're looking for, so. All right.
Okay, thank you all.
Happy to entertain a motion?
Move to approve R 2022-89.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Lee, we would be, you will be voting on R 22-89. Any questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously. Well, now that we've got money, guess how we're going to spend it? We're going to be moving to item 10C, consider action to approve resolution number R 2022-91 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving construction contract with Archer Western LLC to provide construction manager at risk services for a not-to-exceed amount of $35,796,207, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for appealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Day Carvillo.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council members. So, in front of you tonight, for your consideration and authorization, is a construction, contract construction services for the Sinsborough Upper Water Treatment Plant, well field, and transmission facilities included in the guaranteed maximum price number two. You also may recall, on August, I presented to you another contract, same as this one, with the same provisions, but for the different packages as part of the GMP number one. So, and you also may recall that at some point during the design phase services of this project, we made a decision to split the project into different packages to allow some packages to move forward with construction while we were still finishing the design on the other packages. But for tonight, for your consideration and approval, are the packages included in the GMP number two. So, we would like to do a recap on how, where we started and where we are at with this project. In 2018, we hired Freezer Nichols to develop a preliminary design report. After the report was provided, we also hired Freezer Nichols to do design and construction administration services. At some point during the design, Freezer Nichols recommended the city to use the construction manager at-risk delivery method. The city agreed with that, and we advertised for requests for qualifications in 2021 for the CMAR services for the design phases. We received seven statements of qualifications. The selection committee selected Archer Western as the best qualified, and the city approved a professional services contract with Archer Western back in 2021. On August of this year, city council authorized the contract for the packages included in the GMP number one for the work, for the clear well and the drilling of the wells in the amount of $8,931,902. With that, I'll pass it on to Freezer Nichols.
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm Kendall King, principal with Freezer Nichols, and here again with pleasure to talk about another major milestone for your water supply project. So, as Fabiola said, you'll be considering GMP number two, which includes four work packages. As a reminder, for those of you that weren't here, as we were developing this plan for this water supply project, the whole idea here is to provide the city with a much more reliable, more resilient water supply with better quality. This project is consisting of drilling three new wells, and then putting into service a well that had already been drilled but had not been used, and then a water treatment plant to remove iron and manganese to improve the quality of that water. So, that's the, kind of the overall of the project, there's some, a bunch of details that I'd be happy to go into. I know last time we talked about this, everybody was a little bit tired. I can stand up here and give you as much detail as you would like to hear. There's two packages that were approved last time include the clear well, the ground storage tank, and then drilling the wells, and then tonight's package is, there's four, so I'll describe those. I can talk about the plant or the elements of the project as much as you want to, we covered some of this last time, but I don't want to waste your time if you're not interested. Anybody?
You can hit the highlights, they've read the packet.
Okay. So, drilling wells, building the water plant, transmission pipeline, that's really the main elements of the project. Okay, and I showed you the project location last time. This is the project team, Fabiola, obviously, Renee, the construction manager, Curtis is our project owner, I'm the project principal, Kira Isles is here, she's the project manager, and Thor Benson with Archer Western is also here in the audience if you have questions for him. Okay, let's talk about the CMAR stuff. So, as you know, the construction manager at risk goes out for bids from contractors and suppliers. They serve then as the general contractor, all those companies and suppliers are providing equipment and supplies to them. The CMAR is also able to bid on work packages, they are treated just like any other bidder. So, when they submit a bid on a work package, they have to be the best value for the city to be considered to perform, self-perform that work. And that's important because in this package of work, they are going to be one of the bidders that we're recommending.
And, sorry, just to be clear on that, when they are the, when they do bid on a particular piece of it, they exclude themselves from the selection process, correct?
They do, that's a, that's a good question and a very good point. So, when other bidders are bidding, or suppliers are bidding, they are involved, and they're not bidding to self-perform that work, they're involved in those reviews. The selections are based on qualifications and price, and so there's a process that we go through to look at the qualifications of the different bidders, and then the price obviously is important, too, and that's in the, in the waiting criteria. If they are bidding to self-perform, then that is performed by the city staff, that evaluation. So, good question. So, on August 15th, they advertised for bids for these four work packages. There, I should have said a little bit more about what, there was four packages, one was for the construction of the water treatment plant, one was for furnishing all of the equipment that goes into the water treatment plant, one was for all the electrical and instrumentation and controls, and then the final work package was for actually building the buildings, the structures. Bid opening was on September 15th. There were a bunch of different vendors and suppliers for the equipment. T. Morales, who was part of Archer Western's design phase services team, is the electrical contractor that bid on that, and they are the sole bidder on package five, and HMC, a building contractor, bid on the buildings themselves, there's two buildings.
Did you say he was the sole bidder?
Yes, we had, so for three of those packages, three of the four packages, we ended up with just one bidder on each of those packages. Archer Western on the water treatment plant, HMC on the buildings, and T. Morales on the So, Archer Western submitted the bid for the water treatment plant construction, that's their specialty, and obviously that factored heavily into their selection as the CMAR. They submitted the bid for the construction of the plant, and obviously, they were more than qualified, or they wouldn't have been the CMAR, and, and so the city and Freezer Nichols were recommending Archer Western be awarded the work for that package. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, there's a whole bunch of equipment, each one bid separately by a different supplier or manufacturer's rep. So, for the blowers, it's universal PAC blowers. For the dry media scrubber, we had three different blowers, Pure Air, and that's the chlorine scrubber, that's what we're talking about here, with a score of 97 and the lowest price. And then, the vertical turbine pumps, Sulzer was the low bidder and had the highest qualification score. And then, polyprocessing for the chemical tanks, lowest price and highest qualification score. And Denora on the chemical chlorine gas feed equipment, again, lowest price and highest score, and McCauley for the chemical metering pump skids, lowest price and highest qualification score. On the filter equipment, it was Leopold, again, lowest price and high qualification score. So, those were fairly straightforward. T. Morales, as I said, was the only bidder on the electrical and instrumentation, they were very, very familiar with the work and the project because they'd been involved in the design, on the design phase. And then, HMC, a very, very good building contractor, is, was the lone bidder on the buildings. But, we had very good experience with HMC building buildings. So, that's the summary of the evaluation results, Archer Western was the bidder on the water plant, and obviously, they were more than qualified.
I have a quick question. How do you determine the qualification score?
So, we had a review process, we had a series of questions, they had to provide information on the company history, their experience, number of installations, that kind of thing. For services, we had questions about the experience, number of years of experience for their lead people, and so we had a, you know, a detailed review criteria that we went through to look at qualifications.
One more. I wanted to ask again about the, just those two people, the single, the single bidders, is it just not a wide range of contractors that are able to do that work? I know it's quite a bit of money, but I would have thought we would get more than one bidder from the-
Well, there's multiple factors, I think, at play, and one is this market that we're in right now, there's a tremendous amount of this kind of work going on, and the contractors are very, very busy. I mean, contractors are just flush with work, and we kid, the joke we use is it's a target-rich environment right now, there are so many projects, major projects being bid, that they have their choice of projects to chase, and most of them have a really strong backlog already, so they're very selective about what they bid on. So, honestly, in this situation, with Archer Western being the, one of the premier plant contractors in the, in the region, other bidders are going to look at this and say, well, what's our chances of knocking Archer Western out of the saddle on this? I've got other projects, I could go bid and have a better chance, and so that was part of it. We're seeing major projects across our region getting one bidder. It's just the nature of the market right now. So, and then, electrical, it's much more like what you're talking about. There's very few of those kinds of contractors that can-
It's quite a specialty.
That can deliver a project of this size, and so, T. Morales was very familiar with it, they were engaged in the design phase, they were very familiar with the project. Other contractors looking around, they're either too busy, already too busy, or they're looking at it saying, what are the odds that we're going to be able to out-compete these guys?
Do you feel that since we just had one bidder, that we've still got a good competitive bid based on your historical pricing and other projects in the area?
I do, and that's been a, the subject of much discussion between Freezer Nichols and staff, and even with Archer Western, is, you know, we, it's not the situation that we would want, is that we would only have one bidder, we would like to have had the competition, but the one thing that we know is that the prices are in line with what we had expected. Where there were differences in prices, Archer Western was able to show us why those were, things that happened since we had our last cost estimate back in June, and just knowing this market, it's, I think, I think we, we feel very good about the situation we're in right now with premier contractors, with prices that are in line with what we were expecting, and very capable of delivering a quality project for the city. As I said to your staff, I would be even more uncomfortable if I was here with a low bid from a less qualified contractor, and having to make a decision to help the city make a decision on a less qualified contractor with a lower bid, I feel really good about the contractors that we have, HMC, T. Morales, the well driller that we got in package number one, Weisinger, and then Archer Western. You've got some quality contractors on board to build this project.
Thank you, Mr. King. Ms. Correio, we, I'm sure council would like to know, what is your thought on this?
Thank you, mayor. I am comfortable with the bid package, I sat with staff, we dissected, I explained my concerns to the council and also to some of your principals at, at the conference, and we will discuss that at a future date. Just some basic concern is the engineers, also the contract managers, also the inspector is also, is also, is also, is also, that with a resource, really limited staff, is I, I need to have some other level of comfort, and I've already discussed with the ACM, so I'll be bringing that forward to the council.
But as far as what council has before them tonight, you are comfortable.
I am absolutely comfortable.
Counsel, I thought with, you know, we want to leverage the expertise of our new city manager, so I wanted to make sure that you heard from her that she's comfortable with that. Counsel, do you have any other questions for Mr. King? Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes. What else is required, and this might not be specifically a question for you, but maybe you know the answer. So, we've got this work package, and we had the one before that we authorized, what else is going to-
How many more packages are you expecting?
So, there are four more, four more packages.
Four more?
The, what's remaining is the pipelines. So, you've got the pipeline that brings the finished water from the plant to the Willow plant site, there's also a sanitary sewer force main that has to be built and a lift station, and that's part of one package. And then, we have the gathering pipelines that gather all the water from the wells and bring it to the water plant, that's another package. And then, we have site work at, at the wells, and then site and paving it around the plant. So, there's four packages left, and those will be bidding sometime in January.
Councilmember Kirkland just wants to know there's an end in sight.
There is an end, it's-
All the way to the delivery now. You're already into it.
Yeah, so, on delivery, well, I guess on starting, I mean, is there like a groundbreaking for, for this work, that's, and how soon is that?
No, we are not planning on groundbreaking, just ribbon cutting.
Well, I don't mean something that I can go put a hard hat on for, I mean, when are you going to start work?
They already start, they are started already working on the GMP number one, so the, the work has already started for the clear well and the drilling on the wells.
Well, that's for drilling the wells that we authorized previously, this is new money, new work, when does this start?
When will this have an authorize to proceed?
This, as soon as you guys authorize approval of this contract, we'll issue a notice to proceed this night.
Okay, don't say that, because he, what he just heard you say is he's going to vote on it tonight and tomorrow morning, and drive out there and expect to see him breaking ground. That's what he wants to know, when can he expect them?
Between the end of October and November, we'll issue a notice to proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch, is there any further discussion or questions? Is that a vote mic or a question mic? Okay, madam secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously, thank you to the consultants that were here tonight.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, council, we're back on the bottom of page three, we have item 10A and 10B. I've had a conversation with the city manager, and to have a logical- I've had a conversation with the city manager and to have a logical conversation about it, we're going to start with item 10B because that's the, really the controlling conversation to have. We're on item 10B. Hold a public hearing and consider action on resolution number 2022-93 on an appeal to approve a replat with variances for Piney Ridge, Section 1, Block A, replat Lot 11, being 1.838 acres out of the Piney Ridge subdivision located at a to-be-determined post oak rim road within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Before Ms. Bills gets started, there was a conversation, I just want to make sure that everyone is extremely clear. Yes, I live in Piney Ridge. My husband has owned property since the eighties. We are over a mile away. I had a conversation with the city attorney. At one point, there was state statute that if you were within 200 feet, you could have a conflict. Then they decided that that was not a relevant rule, so now there is not the 200 feet requirement. If there was the 200 feet requirement, I am more than a mile from this. So, and then the other questions, because I also had this conversation with the city manager, I didn't sell the lot, I didn't finance the lot, I don't have any financial, I'm not involved with anything about the lot or this replating. And I know there's been a discussion because we've all, I hope that each and every one of you have watched the planning and zoning meeting because it'll help things have a little smoother conversation tonight. But if you haven't, we'll make sure we cover all of that. But we all know that this is a subdivision that has one way in and one way out and there's been discussion about access. It's all public information. I live on the east side of Laura Lane. Any access, any secondary access would come off of 95, which is on the west side of Laura Lane. So any road that would be connected would not go through property that I own. It would, I would not be in a position of, let me make you a deal and you can cut through my property. It won't do anybody any good to improve access. So after conversations with both the city attorney and the city manager, I am completely confident that I am not conflicted out and that is why I am staying in place and will facilitate the conversation. With that, we'll turn things over to Ms. Bills and then we may hear one thing from our city attorney before we have further discussion. Ms. Bills?
Sure. Yeah, so tonight, there's two different items on the agenda. We kind of broke them down into the variances themselves and then the actual replat. So what we're going to talk about right now is the replat itself. So the request that we have, that's come to the planning department and then to the Planning and Zoning Commission, is there's an existing lot in Piney Ridge, Phase, Section 1, Block A, and it's Lot 11, to divide Lot 11 into two, two lots, so one additional lot from what is there today. So the existing lot is 1.838 acres. This would divide the lot into, I didn't get that slid in there, two acre, two lots. The first one would be a little over an acre and the other one would be about 0.77 acres in size. We, as part of the process in the Texas Local Government Code, because this property has residential restrictions on it, it was prior to the B3 code being adopted, a single-family subdivision, the zoning on it, we have to take all residential replats to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review. And then the City of Bastrop Code has a specific clause in Section 1 of the municipal code that any decision from a board of commissioners can be appealed to council. So that's how it then ended up in front of y'all. Through the replat process in the Texas Local Government Code, there's notification requirements. So we sent notifications to eight property owners that were within that 200-foot boundary around the property. We did receive written responses from two of the property owners, 133 Post Oak Rim and 138 Post Oak Rim. And 138 Post Oak Rim also provided some additional comments for this meeting. The area of that replat and the 200-foot buffer measures a little over 10 acres. The area of the lots that are opposed to the 200-foot buffer, I'll have a map here in a second, is 2.77 acres, so that's 26.88 percent. So that's kind of the close-up view of the area. So the area in red is the lot that's requesting the replat. The bound, blue boundary line is the 200-foot buffer. The areas in pink are the portions of the two lots that have written formal protest of the variances and the replat. In the local government code, it has a requirement that if more than 20% of the area of the replat in question plus the 200-foot buffer area, more than 20% of the area is protested, which that's the pink area, then it throws the vote for the governing body into a 70% requirement. We call it supermajority, but in this case, it's a four out of five vote of city council to approve the variances and the replat. And Alan?
Ms. Bills, before you go on, counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Borquez? Or, Mr. Borquez, is there anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. All I wanted to follow up on is that the state law requirement says if you receive protest in writing before the end of the public hearing and it comes from owners of 20% or more of the land adjacent to the subject site, then to approve a replat with variances requires a three-quarters vote of the governing body. That would be three-quarters of five, which is four.
Everybody clear? Thank you, Ms. Bills. Thank you, Mr. Borquez. You can continue, Ms. Bills.
Yeah. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at a hearing at the September 15th P&amp;Z meeting and they voted six to zero to deny the plat as the item to approve the variances failed. And without the variances, the plat doesn't meet the subdivision requirements in the B3 code and cannot be approved. And that, so staff's recommendation on this is to deny the replat request.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Bills before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Couple of clarifying questions. So in reading the packet, I, there was some, there were some exceptions. And one of the exceptions was where there are 30 or more dwelling units on a single public or private access road, all dwelling units are equipped with an improved automatic sprinkler system. So I was wondering if that could apply in this situation?
So that would require all of the units, so require every unit in the subdivision to be sprinkled?
Not individual homes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I was wondering, so the ordinance came into play in 2018, if I'm remembering correctly, the fire code?
So we adopted the 2018 International Fire Code in 2019, but the same requirement was in the previous version as well.
And then there was mention of some illegal plating during a period of time. So after 2019, there were no more lots, no more lots have been split in that area.
There have been a few lots split since 2019. So on, it didn't get brought up and a lot of the lots were already, had been split a while ago. It had been illegally de-divided and houses already put on them. And they, they were cleaning up a lot of the plating issues that were there.
Inside the city limits or inside the county?
Both.
Okay.
So do we know roughly when the last lot was split before we started actually enforcing that?
I'll have, I think it was about a year ago.
Chief, do you want to speak to the fire code, what changed and what didn't change the 30 lots and the one-way-in, one-way-out?
And if I can answer that, so if it was, it put in place in 2019, how did those others slip through the cracks?
It's a great question. Just our, we're slowly getting more into the review process as, as the fire department continues to grow, right? We hired the fire inspector and we, we were having third party and, and so as we continue to grow, we just, we're trying to catch more of those things. This is one of the ones, when we did, I forget what budget, we hired our fire inspector and, and our plans reviewer that was in-house. And so we've been doing those in-house now and so we catch those as they come through now. Whereas a couple of years ago, we weren't doing those in-house where they may just go right by the, right, right through the, the review process. What was the other question? I'm sorry? Was that just that one question?
I wanted to, well, yeah, I wanted to know how they slipped through the cracks. And that was the last question that I had because she answered exactly when it, the code went into effect was 2019. Excuse me. So I was just wondering how more got split after that.
Yeah.
And sometimes the deeds, they don't come back for replating. They just sell it by meets and bounds and have a septic tank and we don't have, we don't have any knowledge of it.
Correct.
Is that correct? What I wanted to clarify was, because there's a, we seem to be having a conversation about 2018, the 30 for one eight, one in, one-way-in and one-way-out, that's, how long has that been a rule?
So that's been a rule since we adopted the 2000, 2009 fire code, which was in 2012, I believe. In 2012 is when we adopted that code. And it was in that, in the 2009 IFC, the International Fire Code at that time.
And this subdivision was really originally platted in the late eighties.
Eighties, yeah, eighties.
That, that was the best I could tell. I don't know, Jennifer, if you have a better date. I think it was...
The original subdivision started in 1981 and then there was a series of replats kind of adjustments over the years and it was done in three phases and I think '84 was the last major change to those plots.
And when, so in '81, I don't know the answer to this because I was very young in '81, I would like everyone to know. In '81, was the portion of the, was it always a portion of it inside the city limits or was it not?
Yes, yeah.
So it's always had like, and I don't know if it's a third or a half, but there's a portion that's inside the city limits and then there's a good portion that's out.
Yes, that, the city limits line, that, that actually dates back to the original town tract in 1920.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful to me. Any other, Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes, Jennifer, I know that you had stated answering Councilmember Lee's question and there was been some replattings. So getting back to that answer, I just want some clarification. Were there replats done by planning and zoning or were there things that slipped through the cracks and nobody actually approved a replat? That's what I'm asking.
They, they were approved by planning and zoning, but a lot of them were to clean up deed divisions that happened in the past.
So the house was already there and they wanted it?
Yeah, so someone had sold half their lot.
They pretty much already replatted it. Or they, they pretty much already did the action, they were just pretty much cleaning up that something already did.
Yes.
So it wasn't like somebody bought a piece of lot and they replatted it and then they built since then.
Yeah, I think there may have been one that slipped through on us that we didn't, didn't catch that that was the case, that they were actually further subdividing it into two lots without a house already being there.
All right, let me rephrase my question. Has planning and zoning purposely allowed a replat?
No.
Okay, that's what I, guess what I'm trying to ask is, no one's actually came up and knew, we did it on purpose?
Yeah, not, not on purpose. Not, not, this was not pointed out as an issue when those, any of those came through.
Okay, that's what I was trying to make sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Crouch?
Well, I, I just, I have a comment on that, on your question and your response because I, I went back and looked and there's a resolution, R 2018-84, that split Lot 12 in 2018 and made it 12A and 12B. And that was done, had to be done by P&amp;Z and council because that was a council, that was a resolution that came from council. So...
I think her point was there were already two houses.
Ma'am?
I think her point was there was already two houses.
Oh.
I'll have, I'd have to go back and look at that case specifically to see, like, there's been a, over the 30-some years, there's been a lot of deed division in some of the existing subdivisions that didn't get done correctly. And when they go to get a permit, especially from the county, that gets flagged as an issue that needs to be corrected, so.
Okay. Because when I read this one today, I didn't get that part of it. I just read that it was split into two lots, 12A and 12B, and done in 2018 by council.
Yeah, the survey doesn't have two houses. There is one house and then they split off a corner of the lot on the survey.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Bills before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Crouch, do you have another question? All right. Ms. Bills, you're done, we're ready for the public hearing?
For the replat.
For the replat? Okay, I'm officially opening the public hearing for the resolution 2022-93. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
All right, I'm officially closing the public hearing.
I was told you didn't have to sign up if you were on the agenda. I would like to speak.
Are you the applicant?
I represent the applicant.
If you'll come forward and state your name and address.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
My name is Donald Barron. I live at 185 Hoffrich Road in a suburb right outside of Bastrop called Rose Anquy, Texas. I've been a builder here for, going on 37 years. I've lived here for 50 years and, Madam General, it was very nice to see you here tonight. And you spoke about something a few minutes ago, the warmth of the people, that I want to kind of talk about for just a second. That's what Bastrop's known for. It's not known for its rules, it's known for the fact that there are people that realize that there's more than just a rule involved in most of the things that we do. The lady I represent, Mrs. Miles, came here a couple of years ago, welcomed her with open arms, said, hey, you're going to love this place, it's great. She found this lot, has a couple of issues that because of life, and it threw her a curveball when her husband died, she needed to kind of regroup a little bit. This was our solution to make that happen. It needed to go before the, the gauntlet that it's gone through. And I appreciate what everyone's done because they pointed out, hey, here's the rules and this is what we're going to abide by. But I'm going to ask you tonight to, if this is an appeal, I'm going to appeal to you for some of that warmth that we've given to the new people that come here because if that's possible to be done here right now, I can tell you that, that this subdivision is way older than everybody here. I lived in this subdivision for 21 years. There were two whole fires during that time that, that were managed and we got through them. And so this subdivision's been here longer than some of the, the codes that y'all are now saying that are violated. And there's only two real things. It's ingress and egress, that can be resolved by council. And I don't know how long y'all have known it, but I would hope that you just found out about it and you're saying, hey, we're going to try to fix this thing. But, but don't let Mrs. Miles be thrown under the bus while we're fixing something here. It's something that there can be a win-win situation here where we create some policies that the fire department knows or maybe already has in place that says, hey, we can have ingress and egress if there's even an emergency going on. And in the meantime, that gives you guys the opportunity to look for a, a long-term solution to this, a permanent solution to this. And, and I'll, I'll just conclude by saying this tonight. The Pastor Brown that gave the invocation tonight asked God to give you the wisdom. And I'm just going to ask you right now to balance out codes and people's lives in what you're doing. And I hope that, and I know, I have faith in you guys, you're going to make the right decision either way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. All right, counsel, are there other comments? Mayor Protem Rogers?
I don't know if I could ask this question. I was wondering when that lot was actually purchased.
So according to the appraisal district, it was purchased on July 14th, 2020 by Martha Miles from David Bragg, who had purchased it on March 20th, 2006, from Pinky Smith.
So in 2020, that was two years after we put in the 2018, the rules. So those rules were in place when she purchased this lot? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to make sure, so, I just want to, all right.
Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just want to talk about the, the situation in general. I, I actually went out and drove the lot because I watched the planning and zoning meetings and I didn't, I couldn't really get a perspective of exactly where the lot was other than in the subdivision. And when I went out there and, and drove it, it's actually probably the third lot at the entrance of the, of the subdivision, real close to that. And so I was thinking it was at the back and it was in, you know, a fire zone, they would block something or something when they would be coming in or out, but I didn't really get that feel by going out there and driving it. There was also, it's at, it's on a cul-de-sac street. I spoke to the chief today about the cul-de-sac and he said that, correct me if I'm wrong, that you didn't, you weren't for sure if the cul-de-sac met the current requirements or not at the, at the end for a turnaround of a fire truck?
Correct. The appropriate radiuses and the appropriate turnarounds and lengths at the end, correct.
But that could be, that could be resolved pretty easily just by making it a little bit bigger.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. So I think the city annexed it close to 44 years ago, so we've, we've had that, this piece in the city limits for a long time. And then I, I don't think any of these problems just popped up now. It's, it's, they've been out there for a long time. It's, they've been out there for a long time. Kudos to you for catching, you know, a revised fire code and, you know, and enforcing that piece of it. I think that subdivision is probably over 90% built out, if not more than that. There's very few vacant lots. This is one of the, one of the few vacant lots, I think.
I don't agree with that. As somebody who lives in the subdivision, did you drive all the way back down Blackjack and Blackjack Cove? And if, Ms. Bills, if you'll put up the map, there's been a considerable amount of building in the last few years, but I don't want us to, the pink one, yeah. I don't know how much of the subdivision that you drove, but if you just went up Post Oak Rim, there may only be a couple, but there's...
I drove a lot of it.
Okay.
If not, if not all of it, just sightseeing after I was in there. And sure, there's a lot of vacant land, but I think it's, looking at the plat or the maps of the lots, and there's, like, the people bought the lot next to their house so that they, nobody would build there, is what I kind of gathered from that. So anyway, if it's been incorporated into the city for 45 years, then maybe we ought to have some obligation for fixing the situation that's there. If it's that dangerous of a situation, from listening to the planning and zoning meetings for the past couple of months, and if we've had this subdivision in the city limits for 45 years, maybe we ought to look at now fixing the problem that we've identified with a one-way in and one-way out, similar to what happened at Tahitian. So I don't know that we should penalize the owner for purchasing a lot and trying to get one more lot out of it. It's not her issue that there are so many cul-de-sac streets in that subdivision. We've definitely been getting taxes for that subdivision for 45 years, and they've been paying electric, and I don't think we have city services out there. We have fire and police and electric. I don't know that we're providing...
We have city water.
Is there? Okay. Not on this particular lot, because they're also asking for septic system as well.
City water.
Not wastewater, water.
Okay. So anyway, I, just looking at all that, and then when I found this replat of the one lot, 12A and 12B, done in 2018, granted, that was right when we adopted the B3 code, and right when we adopted the new fire code. But I think there should be some reprieve on our part, just because we've known about the problem for 45 years, and it just, we just now identified it with the new fire code because Chief Rosales is on his A-game. So like again, kudos for that. But anyway, I think we should have some leniency with that. There's some public safety concerns. There's public safety concerns with any cul-de-sac street, whether it's out in that part of town, or if it's at Hunter's Crossing or Riverside Grove. There's two ways in and out at Riverside Grove, but they're real close together. I don't know if that particular subdivision meets that requirement either, or if it needs to be further apart, based on what you told me today, chief. I didn't go out and measure it, so I'm just kind of speaking generally, but just looking at the one-way in and one-way out for Riverside Grove, they're not far enough apart by what you described to me today. And maybe we should consider putting not a fully paved road. I know there's an option, you could put a gravel road that'll support a fire truck. Chief Rosales told me that the criteria for that is just an all-weather road, 85,000 pounds to support a vehicle. Maybe it's something that we can do to help with the situation in the future, just so we don't have to have putting people at risk on a fire if it's as dangerous as what's been coming across in the last two P&amp;Z meetings. But I don't think it should be a dead-end road for what we're trying to do and what the owner's trying to do with the property, just my opinion.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, ma'am. So I do agree that, I think that we do need to take a look at where, if anywhere, we can add ingress and egress to that location in the future. However, for tonight, we are tasked with determining whether or not, in reading through the packet or the code, it's, there's a statement in there that says council members are tasked with determining if we're going to make an exception, whether or not the request causes unnecessary hardship to the applicant in requesting it, or whether or not the request for variance creates a risk for life and safety. So that's what we're faced with tonight. What's the hardship to the applicant, and does that hardship in requesting a variance create a risk to life and safety? So when I did watch the planning and zoning meeting, and I do want to sincerely empathize with the applicant. I also want to tell you how sorry I am for the loss of your husband. And understanding you from that meeting, the need, this is life sustaining for you. Fiscally, you're trying to be fiscally sustainable for yourself, and I want to make sure that that is recognized. So in saying that, though, when I was watching the meeting, one of the things, I paint pictures to make me understand things better, or when I'm trying to resolve situations. So one of the things that came to my mind was a situation where I was on a cruise, and people were piling into the elevator, and it was just like a madhouse, because we had just had our safety thing. And so all these people were piling into the elevator. One person got on the elevator, and the alarm went off. So we were all kind of looking at each other like, you need to get off the elevator, because it's a safety hazard. And my girlfriend, who doesn't speak very well, rudely said, you need to get off. So the person got off, and sure enough, the elevator doors closed, and the elevator proceeded to move up. So that, I don't know why that came to my mind when I was watching that planning and zoning meeting, but it kind of made me think of this situation, because I think a lot of planning and zoning's concern was, and I think one of the comments that was made was, it's just two more cars on the road. Well, we don't know what kind of damage that one person could have caused to that elevator had the doors closed and the elevator tried to lift. It's kind of, to me, the same situation. I agree. When you think about it, you're just adding one more car to the road. But in the event that there is that one accident, or there is that one fire, that could pose a safety risk, is what our expert is telling us. And we have to kind of lean on what our expert is telling us. If our expert, I'm not an expert in the field of fire, so if our expert is telling us that that could pose a risk, and this is why we have this code, we kind of have to listen to that. I do want you to fully understand, I sympathize with your situation, and if I could build another road tomorrow to make it so that you could have what you need to sustain yourself, I would. But I'm more inclined to listen to the expert in this situation, because we have a whole community that we need to look out for. And if they're saying this could pose a fire risk, then I have to take heed to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. Jennifer, I just had a couple of questions. Okay, so right now, the way the lot, the land that the owner purchased, she can still build a house there and get her septic and get everything all by the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
Can she also build a second house there?
Yes, so by our rules, so the way the fire code is, is you, when you change things, when you change the situation, in this case, we're looking at a plat. So we're changing the plat from one lot to two lots. That's when our new rules, you know, weren't in place in 1981, kick in. So now we're looking at the fire code, making sure we're not making the situation worse for the subdivision. But that lot that was already there is essentially, we always like to use, or grandfathered, which gets overused, but it's been there. It was an expectation that it was going to be built per the zoning code at the time. Zoning allows it to build a primary house with two accessory structures on the lot, so they could build up to two more accessory dwelling units. But if they were to split it into two, now that three units that they could build by the zoning becomes six. So that's, it's not just two more houses, it's potentially six more units on these two lots versus...
So it's much like zoning, because Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, we have this conversation a lot. Zoning stays with the property, whether it's sold or whatever. Once this is replatted, it's two legal lots. Each one of them could have a big house and two little houses on it, and there would be nothing to stop it. You wouldn't be able to hold a building permit, it would rock and roll.
Yes, it would keep going, yeah. For what we're looking at, the two variants we're discussing tonight are linked to the subdivision regulations. Regardless of the zoning district, these are the rules for subdivision, so.
So she could still build her house? She could even build a duplex and rent half of it if she needed to? So nothing's, at this point, the way she purchased it, there's nothing stopping her from building her own house?
No.
And moving forward? Okay.
And could build a second, a second house as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Just not split the land, right?
And I had...
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, she could do it on the one legal lot that she has right now.
Oh, okay, I get, thank you. I just want to clarify what you were saying.
Yes. The, one question that I had, because it wanted the, Mr. Garron is a surveyor, and so the survey that he did, the, it divides into 1.065 acres and 0.773 acres. And as best I could tell, the 0.773 acres has over a 50-foot drop from the front to the back of the property.
It's a pretty severe, yeah, topography.
So that has, and it's yet, oh, thank you for that picture. Then on the far left, that, to me, that's like, that's where the house, that's where it's flat. So on the 0.773 acres, it seems like that's going to be a fairly expensive lot to build on, given the topography and getting a septic system to work.
There's going to be, have to, it's going to most likely have to be an aerobic septic system, and it'll have to have some grading going on in there.
So if the plat's done, then that potentially be three houses on that 50-foot drop?
Yeah.
Okay.
And like I say, everything, people ask me, is this buildable? Well, nothing engineering anything can be buildable, so, but it's more expense and potential grading involved in this lot.
So Councilmember Crouch, to your point, there are a number of lots out there, some yes, some no, where this appears to be, as best I can tell, the resident of 106, which is also Mr. Bragg, it appears that he bought two lots and built a house on one, and, you know, and it's completely legal and private in his business, but you said, well, they bought the next lot because they didn't want anybody to build next to them, or they bought the next lot as an investment.
Yeah.
And so now that one lot that was purchased in 2006 and sold in 2020, we're now talking about, that turns into two lots, and now, but the potential of what, when the subdivision plat was originally done, and it would have been one house, we're now potentially looking at six houses. So that's, I just want to make sure that we're real clear. And I, and I, Councilmember Lee, thank you so much. I appreciate the fact that that's not the intent now, but we don't know who's going to own the property in 10 years, but the plat will be done for 10 years.
Yes, yeah, so once the plat is done, that's the new lots that are there, so.
All right. Councilmember Crouch, did you have another question?
I did. I had a couple of them. One was, you just kind of went through it. You could have two houses or three houses on one lot, and now we've got it divided into two, so there could potentially be six houses. I don't think that's the intent of the current owner. I think it's just, like you said, we don't know what's going to happen in 10 years, but right now, if you, if they both just built one house on each of the replatted lots, and that's the way it stayed, then you're just, you're actually could be less people than if you built two more houses on one of the lots.
But you have no way of restricting it to one house?
Exactly, yeah.
But you do now if it's one lot?
Yes. The other question I had was for the chief again, and you don't have to get up for, oh, you guys...
Yes, he does. He has to speak into the mic.
So one of the requirements was for a fire protection system for the house, and I was just curious, in the city limits, how many houses actually have a fire protection system in them? Do you have any idea?
Very little. If anything, I think it's maybe one or two within the city limits that actually have a fire sprinkler system. It's not very, not used very widely. We try to push it. Actually, a conversation we had today with the developer was about the usage of that to reduce road widths. The fire code adds more exemptions for that requirement, because it's indicating that it's a safer, safer-built residence. But in this case, for this particular subdivision, that would have had to be done a long time ago, when they did the, before they got over the 30. The way the code's written is anything over the 30 units, with all those units after the 30 would then be required to be sprinkled. Where in this case, you can't re-sprinkler one, and then all the 174 other ones not be sprinkled, and then we continue to just do the development like we've been talking about.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense? Because I want to make sure we're clear, like, we're not just talking about this one street with the cul-de-sac, we're talking about the entire neighborhood and the egress of that entire neighborhood, of all the streets and all the residences that live there, all 174, 174 plats that are on the, on the, on the whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
That count on Piney Ridge and Hoffman?
That count on that one road as you suggest, yes.
Yeah. My question, well, I was just curious how many other houses in the city limits had a fire protection system and not, it's very uncommon to do that.
It's very uncommon, yeah, especially in Texas, because it's just not something that's widely used here. Now, as you, further up north you go, the smaller the houses get, the different roadway widths and those kind of things, they use them more.
Yeah, and then one of the other things that we had talked about is just your plan for, we know that's a risk out there, and then I know that you've had, you told me you had a fire out there not that long ago. So there is a plan developed, so you know that there's one way in and one way out, and you still have to, if you're fighting a fire, you have to move, I would think, to one side or the other, and then try to fight it and still kind of have some traffic control coming in and out.
Absolutely. And this egress route is not specific to a fire. It could be a flood, it could be a hurricane, it could be a tornado, it could be any type of emergency that would require egress to and from your residence. But we tend to utilize wildland, because we have that quite a bit here, as a specific type of emergency that would require a lot of egress at the same time. You know, trying to egress, they say, you know, to egress one residence is about five minutes per residence, and if you have a street of 11 homes, that's about an hour-ish to get those, and the number of people and those, and so it's very, if you have one egress route out, it's very cumbersome, especially when you have responders, like we talked about, responders coming in as you're trying to get out, and it makes it kind of difficult. And that's why the fire code makes it down to those 30 units. And that applies to all kinds of other, it applies to our apartment complexes. We only allow 100 dwelling units on an apartment complex before there's an additional two-way in or an additional route out.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Chief, would you speak to, Councilmember Crouch made a comparison to Riverside Grove, and what I know about Riverside Grove was that we mandated the builders put in two trees in the front yard. We really don't have that situation in Piney Ridge. And the county is using mitigation, federal mitigation dollars, and in a very unusual situation, spending tax dollars on private property for a very specific reason. Would you please share with folks what they're doing?
Yeah, we utilize the hazard mitigation funding that comes from the state or that comes from FEMA, and we utilize that to go around. And they target specifically the Piney Ridge subdivision, or they target the outside areas around that, like around 1441, any of those. But when we, anytime we go to a hazard mitigation-type planning event, that neighborhood of Piney Ridge and anything around South Shore, those neighborhoods always get targeted, just because it has a high risk for us. When we talk about WUW, or the Wildland Urban Interface, that neighborhood is specifically talked about every time. And so we know it's a challenge. We've put it into our, some of our plans before, our hazard mitigation plans, and those, it's just more of a, it's a funding stream, and then how do you, how do you, how do you get those grants, and how do you get those abilities here? But the county does provide that service. You can contact them, and they can come in. We've partnered with the Texas Forest Service. We've gone with them and tried to figure out ways to mitigate. But again, it's private property, and so we can only do so much, especially even if we adopt codes like the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Those are not retro codes, just like the International Fire Code. It's not retro. It's only what's coming in, what changes have been made, and when you make specific changes. So it's tough for us to go back and make sure that you're following, that you're up to date, because unless you come in like this and make a change, we're not able to push that type of code on top, on top of...
But they've been actively... But they've been actively working in the area.
But we've been actively working quite a bit in those areas. Anywhere South Shore, Long 21, along 1441, any of those areas, where we saw or where we see lots of, of wildland fires.
To try to mitigate any spreading of fires and save the structures.
Mitigate fuel, mitigate, you know, we, defensible space around your residence. We, we preach those around that area specifically.
One, one more.
Yes.
You'd mentioned, talking to you today too, about the timing of putting a secondary road in. So can you repeat that for me?
Yeah, so the code does, one of the exceptions to the 30-unit rule is, the first rule was the sprinklers over 30. The second rule to the exemption was that you could have a current development in place that would allow for the extension of a road. So if you had two developments going next to each other, and they were phased developments, and they were already through the, the plating process, already through the development process, and you had signed, sealed, ready to go, the council's approvals, those kind of things, you can allow one, more than 30 units to be built, because you know the next one's coming in. And so that's what would have to take place into this. So if, if we were to have a road that was, we were going to say is going to be built at X amount of time, then we could say, yes, we know that's going to take place, and yes, it's been stamped. And it's, that's, the code allows for that approval.
Is there currently any right, and this may be a Jennifer Bills question, is there any current right-of-way that connects any street in this subdivision?
No, not, not, not in this subdivision, no.
So, but, that doesn't mean in there couldn't be in the future, or that we should, shouldn't plan for one in the future. And just looking at the overall map of the place, seemed like an obvious one would be extending Mesquite. I think it's Mesquite that we talked about. That could get in there and at least give you a secondary access, and that would be one of the shortest routes. And then also, there was a lexical easement line that kind of has a gravel road going up it all, already. It, and it connects to Walter Hoffman, I think. And that's probably the very shortest one, but it, it might not meet the road requirements as far as the incline, you know, going up a hill. I'm not sure what the grade of that hill is. But I think there's some alternative ways that we can plan to get into there. And that's why I wasn't sure about the timing of it. If we know that there's an alternate way, and we could start planning for that with our master transportation plan, and then put a secondary road, even if it's just a gravel road, to get people to get them safe. Maybe that could be a alternate, alternative to this whole thing, if we can plan that out.
Yeah. Part, part of the challenge of that is we will have to go through private property, so there will be some land acquisition. In the master transportation plan, that we actually do show, we call them like dotted, the dotted line roads. In some areas of town where we already knew there was topography or built conditions, where we knew there needed to be roads, they're not the solid white line roads. They're the dotted line roads that we know there needs to be roads somewhere there that'll need to be studied. And that is on the thoroughfare plan currently. But, yes, and Mesquite is probably the straightest shot out of all of them, so.
Is this Albatross in the city? I mean, is it, is there any other place in the city that's similar to this? Is this the only thing that we know about that's run way in?
How many houses, how many lots are there in, I love this, that's what I love about Bastrop, in the new subdivision from 1960? Because that's one way in and one way out at Cedar.
Yeah, there's got to be more.
Yeah, it's another one of the, it's barely over the 30, I want to say it's, it's...
I didn't know how close it was.
It's ish.
Ish, yeah. It, it, I want to say 40.
It's nowhere near what we're looking at.
It's nowhere over the 100 that, or 170-ish that's in this one as well, yeah.
But to go by what Councilmember Lee said, if it's just one person, it breaks the rule, right?
Correct, yeah. If it's one, and then, and then what is, where does it go from there? Yes.
Yeah. So we potentially have two?
For now?
Um, yes, at a low, yes, at, at a lower, lower level, yes. But yes, you're, you're absolutely right, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for Ms. Bills, or the fire chief, or the attorney, or the city manager, or anyone else you would like to ask a question of? I'm happy to entertain a motion. Oh, I thought I closed, did I close the public hearing?
Well, then he spoke, so...
I think we opened it, yeah, and he spoke as the applicant, so I'll, I'll double close it. Okay. So, happy to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for the replating of the lot into two lots.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch to approve Resolution 2022-93.
Second.
I have a second.
So we actually had these posted as two items, one for the variance and one for the replat.
That's why I did 2022-93, because that's the variance for the replat.
Well, no, this is the replat with the variances. The...
I gotcha.
Yeah, 2092 is the actual variances themselves, that calls out the specific codes, sections we're varying.
I got you. That's why you put 10A with 10A.
Yeah.
All righty.
So I need to reword it?
No. We, do we need to, city attorney, do we need to do 10, have the conversation about 10A so that we can discuss the variances before we approve, try, before we have a conversation about the resolution?
That's my recommendation, Mayor and Council, is you address the variances first, and then the replats second. And whatever, if someone's making a motion to approve the variances, let it be recorded in the minutes that it's because the council found special circumstances or hardships. And those words are in our code of ordinances to do such a thing.
Okay. So can I table the motion and go to 10A?
Certainly.
All right, that's what we're doing. We're going to go to 10A, hold a public hearing, and consider action through an appeal to the City Council on Resolution Number R 2022-92 to grant a subdivision variance from the B3 Code Technical Manual, Section 32.005, requiring all lots to be minimum of one acre in size for onsite sewer facilities in a subdivision variance from the 2018 International Fire Code, Appendix D, Section D 107.1, requiring a subdivision with more than 30 units, lots, to have a secondary point of egress for Piney Ridge, Section 1, Block A. Replat of Lot 11 being 1.838 acres of Piney Ridge subdivision located at a to-be-determined address number on Post Oak Rim within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. So we've pretty much had the ingress egress, then the, we need to have the wastewater septic system discussion.
And that was the numbers that were in the staff report for how many lots there, there are currently.
Oh, yeah, let's see those real quick.
So there were three sections, Piney Ridge was originally platted in three sections. Section 1 was platted in 1978, actually, with 49 lots, replatted in '81 to increase to a total of 71. And Section 2 had original 13 lots, that they increased in the same year to 32 lots. And then in 81, Section 3 was platted with 65 lots. Over the years, there's been some other deed divisions and replats that have been done since 1981. So total individually-owned parcels per the BCAT is 170. That being said, some of them, the way they show up on BCAT is that they are one lot when they're in fact maybe three or four that are under common ownership, that their neighbors bought two or three, and they still can sell those off later as platted lots. So that, so there's potential that there's more than 170 lots in this subdivision today. And that's the kind of picture. You can see it's half, a little less than half in the city limits, half is outside in the county. But yeah, you can see the cul-de-sacs, that they all end, and none of them actually connect out of the subdivision. So for the two variance sections, we talked a lot about the fire code ingress egress. But the second one is for septic service. In the B3 Code, we adopted a minimum lot size for septic service. And part of the reason that that got put in was with the Form-based Code, tying the new standards less to use-based. So for the subdivision, under the previous zoning category of, I'm losing all my numbers, SF, I think nine, they had, had to have a minimum house size of 1,800 square feet. And setbacks were 25 feet, 50 feet in some places. There were a lot of restrictions in there that kept it being more rural. So with the Form-based Code, a lot of those standards went away. But in, to ensure that P2 was still a more rural subdivision, if it was going to be using septic, was to have a one-lot minimum to have a septic system. Because as you start to divide down into half-acre lots while it's allowed by TCEQ, that starts to lose that rural subdivision, that, that less dense feel to the subdivision. So that's the, the first section. And then the section for the fire code is 2018 International Fire Code, Appendix D, that we've talked about, that you have to have a minimum of two ways in and out when there's more than 30 units or lots. And again, this one also received the two protests from the owners of the adjacent properties. Any questions?
Counsel, I just also want to bring to your attention, I think you all, we have a copy of an email from Ms. Daniel. Their property was purchased in 1999. They turned in, that they were against the replating prior to planning and zoning. And then they've also added additional information that they turned in today. And the other lot that was opposed was Greg and Patricia Warner, and they purchased their property in 1995. So those, those are the oppositions that we have on record of. Okay. On the, from the Form-based Code and talking about the half-acre to an acre, TCEQ, like we, there is no discussion, you can't get less than a half-acre, TCEQ comes unglued, correct?
No, they would not let, they would not, we would get in trouble if we approved a septic permit on less than a half an acre on a new lot.
Okay. And you're saying that the rule of the one acre, we talked about the character districts, because when you live in Riverside Grove, you have an expectation of a sidewalk in front of your house, and you can probably hear the, the kids playing in the yard next door and that type of thing. And then there's a, a different type of living where most people are on three or four acres, or one and a half acres, or whatever. But that, you're describing this subdivision as in the characteristic of, what did you call it, rural?
Rural residential.
Rural residential.
It's what it's, I think, shows up as on our future land use plan.
Okay. But the variance that's before us is the difference between one acre and 0.773 acres. If it was 1.065 acres and 1.073 acres, we wouldn't be discussing this variance.
No.
All right. Council, Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, so I had a couple of questions on this subject. One was, are there any half-acre lots in that subdivision that have a septic system on them now?
Yes.
And so this one's bigger than a half acre. If it's, if it is allowed to replat, is really, by my square footage, is a little more than an end zone from being short of an acre. 7,000 square feet short of being an acre where it would fit under our requirements. It's way bigger than the half acre, which is what TCEQ requires. So I, I think we're, again, kind of going back to the other resolution. It, it's miniscule as far as what, you know, the differences between half, there's already houses that have half-acre out there with a septic system. We're requiring one acre for a, a septic system, and she's right at .8, which is, like I said, an end zone from being short of that. So again, I, it's just, you know, miniscule what we're talking about here.
Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Bills? All right, I am officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, is there anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Would the applicant like to speak at this open, at this public hearing? If they'll come forward and say your name, Colin, if we'll get a timer. You'll, if you'll state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Donald Baron, 185 Hoffrich Road, Roseanki, Texas. To, to reiterate Councilman Crouch's point a while ago, there are other lots that are three-quarters of an acre in, in that same, all the way down to a half an acre, that have single-family residents on it that work just fine. With regard to the, the septic system, and again, what he said was that .84 of an acre is much closer to one acre than it is to, to half of an acre. If you look at the topography and you look at the, the terrain, an aerobic system will be put there. I contacted the, the lady that I've used for many, many years, that is a licensed, registered engineer for installing septic systems. And she said, as she always says, let's see what we have to do. But it's not even marginally an issue in being able to put that on there, should she be able to do that. One other thing I wanted to point out to you guys was, with, with the, the passing of Mrs. Miles' husband, it changed her finances greatly. And I had a, I, I've retired from building custom homes. But there was another lady that came to me, that I put these two people together. She has a special needs kid, and the lot that if the, the city council were to allow this, is absolutely perfect for her geographically, because that special needs kid needs to be close to town, and the school, et cetera. And because of that, the, the financial burden that there's going to be an exchange of money should this happen, allows Mrs. Miles to build this house. Mrs. Miles, while I hate to say it in public, is a, a lady that has a limited budget. And she cannot afford to build a house on that with 1.84 acres. So those, those kind of things, I think, need to come into this. It's not like someone's coming in here and trying to, to just upset something. It's, it's these rules that actually came into play after the subdivision was already there. Even if Mrs. Miles did know, we didn't look at that. It wasn't, her husband was alive when this happened. And so it wasn't something that she saw. It was something that has happened after the fact, that has put her in a situation where she's asking for some leniency here, so that being scrappy, she can take care of herself. I, one last thing I will tell you, her son lives on Laura Lane. And while she still looks 39 to me, she's getting up in age and will need to be close to family in order to take care of herself. She's also helped her son through some cancer treatments, et cetera, that a mother would do for a son no matter what. And that's, that's a part of the economic situation, the human part that I was telling you about a while ago, that I think would be something you should consider.
So was it always her intention to divide the lot?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Crouch? Oh, wait, anybody else for the public hearing, to speak at the public hearing? We're officially closing the public hearing. Councilmember Crouch?
Yeah. Jennifer, or Colin, can you go to page 47 of the packet?
We don't, we don't have it on, we don't have it available on the presentation.
Okay, it was just a map of the subdivision. I was just going to point out exactly where this lot is.
Can I have control of the presentation again, Colin?
Councilmember Crouch, Mr. Guerin made a comment of, well, it's close to the egress point, so it's not a problem. And that's very much like if you're on the elevator, and, you know, for, if, if you're anybody that's past where Post Oak Rim goes out, that's that many more cars that you're waiting on to get out. So the actual location to the ingress egress, Mr. Guerin is a surveyor, not an engineer, and I don't think that a traffic engineer would agree with that assessment. And I believe that was discussed at planning and zoning as well.
Yeah. And also, I was going to do is show where the house is and the, and the whole subdivision, just for people like me that watch planning and zoning and didn't really get to tell exactly where the house is.
Thanks.
Can you do that little blow-up again?
Yeah.
It's right, right there at the head of that red circle, at the, at the entrance to the, to the subdivision. So it's a very short distance to the entrance. That, that was all I wanted to, else I wanted to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Counsel?
Have you closed the public hearing?
Yeah, I did close it.
I'd like to ask Alan a question.
Absolutely.
Mr. Borkbass, if we approve either this one or the replating, how does that position us for the next person to ask? I mean, if we, are we starting something that, well, you did it for the last person, or things of that sort? I mean, are we starting a new way of doing it, because we've already done that for somebody else on either the variances or the replating?
What I'll say, Mayor Pro Tim, is that similar circumstances should be treated similarly. And if we're going to deviate from the rules, because council is inclined to make a different policy decision, in this case, if you order... in this case, if you were to approve that, it's because you found there's something special about this property, or there's a hardship that justifies deviating from the rules. You would have to find special circumstances. Why is, why is deviating from the rule regarding septics or the fire code okay on this property and not other properties? That, that's how you, you could handle this. The other way to handle this is to have a more comprehensive review of the rules and decide if going forward, you want these same rules in place for any property that happened to come forward. But no, the expectation is that similar properties are treated similarly. Do I know that approving this one sets a binding precedent where you have to approve future requests? I could probably find a way to help you distinguish those if it comes forward. But that's not the way planning and zoning is supposed to be done.
But if we find this is a special circumstance, and let's say the next time it's, we don't think it's that special of a circumstances, it's a judgment call. And then it could be, how do you judge this person compared to that person? Is that not correct?
Correct. And normally in the land use arena, it's not about the people. That, that may seem cold and heartless, and that's not my intention. Normally in the land use arena, it's about the land.
My point for this is, if we're thinking about changing the rules, it's not about the land. It's about, they're asking because of the person in this situation, correct?
And if some point council's looking at the rules and thinks certain rules on the books don't serve your policy interests, then you amend the Code of Ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
So, Mr. Borkwess, like a hardship would be, there's a, there's an easement with a pipeline, and that's why we can't meet the building setback. That, those type of, something that's very specific to the land that impacts the ability to apply the specific code, is that a?
Traditionally, Mayor, yes, fixtures like pipelines would be an example. Topography would be an example. The wooded nature, or the geotech of the property, the configuration of the property. Those are the types of things that usually are brought up to justify special circumstances or a hardship. In this case, it's whatever a supermajority would find.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Baron describing Ms. Miles as scrappy, because I think we've all spent some time in the appraisal district. And the property was purchased in 2020, and it was on the books with a value of $39,000, and it's currently in 2022 on the books for $107,000. So one solution is to put a for sale sign up and buy a smaller lot. There's lots for sale on Laura Lane. From, from a hardship standpoint, if there is a legally platted lot that is a better size, then that can become a solution for a house. Is that correct?
Possibly, I, we don't, don't tend to follow the purchasing patterns of the subdivision, but yeah.
But I'm saying, there, there, I, okay, so let me ask my question more specifically. If it was a legally platted lot, it was less than an acre, and, but it was legally platted, and it was more than .5 acres.
Yes.
They, they would not be at planning and zoning. They would get a permit for a house. They would be on a septic system.
Yes.
We wouldn't be having a variance of less than an acre, because that wouldn't be a discussion. And they would be able to put a house into ancillary or auxiliary, I never know which one y'all use.
Accessory.
Two other accessory, thank you, accessory houses on any of those lots per the B-3 Code.
Yes, if it's an already platted lot, it's a legally, a legal lot by our language, then yes, we would issue a permit. In this case, we're changing the subdivision. That's why it's come before PNZ and now council.
Okay. Chief Rosales, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to say that you already have that today, right? So if we don't make any, we're not subdividing, she could do all of what you're speaking with today in the fire code, and the, the other codes would not be, not be relevant, because we're not able to retro those codes.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to clarify was, I think I misspoke about the new, the new subdivision. It does have two, two ins and outs, just, just.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, I remembered that too, after we.
Elm Street and Cedar Street.
Oh, yeah, it does go there, okay. So this really should be the only subdivision that's.
Yeah, I went, I checked the maps, it's the only subdivision, so, wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Councilmember Plunkett's very happy to hear that.
It is, it is the only one in the city limits, but within our ETJ, there are other subdivisions. So the woodland subdivision is another one that only has one way in and out, and has about 100 lots in it that cannot, can't further subdivide.
Woodland, it's.
Woodland is.
Between the colony and here.
And, but once Valverde is built, Valverde is required to connect to that. So it will actually eventually have, it was stubbed out to the next property to continue the road in the future. It just hasn't yet, so.
And that's north of Highway 71?
Yeah, and this specific topic is on our, when we look at ETJ, like, I'm not, I don't have regulation in ETJ, but when I do look at ETJ developments, this is our number one life safety priority that we look at.
Is one way in, one way out?
Is this one way in, one way out? And, and that's to prevent future developments from doing this. And then the other deal is hydrants, water supply, and those kind of things. Those are our two life safety things that we go for, so.
Yeah, it, it's called Piney Ridge for a reason. There's quite a bit of topography in Piney Creek, and there's some things to, that block it. All right. Ms. Bills is ready to answer any other questions, or I'm happy to entertain a motion on to item 10A.
Allen, can I ask your expertise on the, on a motion? Would I need to make a motion for both resolutions? 93 and 92 and 93?
No, we'll do 10A, and then we'll do 10B.
My recommendation would just to handle the variances first, 10A. If they don't pass, then there's no reason to consider 10B.
I'd like to make a, a motion for to grant a variance for R 2022-92 to allow a septic system on less than an acre of land. And that's based on really TCEQ requirements for a half acre. I think TCEQ is who you'd have to file the permit with, and who would do the inspections for that. And if we can meet their criteria, we can, and it'd be a hardship variance as well. I know you said to mention that in the, in the motion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Counsel, Councilmember Crouch, I need you to address both variances in that resolution the way it's stated in 10A. Unless you're wanting us to have, draw up another resolution.
No, give me a minute, let me read it again.
So you could just say you're making a motion to approve Resolution 2022-92?
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
Make a motion to approve Resolution R 2022-92.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary?
Colin?
Oops, sorry. Discussion, yes, Councilmember Plunkett.
I'd just like to make a point that, first of all, staff did exactly what they were supposed to do on this. And PNZ did exactly what they were supposed to do on this. The, the, the code was clear. The, the, you know, so if we were to approve this resolution, we'd not be in any way saying what they did was wrong. What I think is important on this is that we do provide another way of egress from the subdivision, we need to anyway. So the fact that we need to do this anyway, because we're not going to reduce this down to 30 lots, you know, that's not going to happen. So I think it's our responsibility, at least for the part of it that's in the city limits, to go down that path. And I would ask that the city manager set a future agenda item so that we can discuss ways that we may be able to accomplish that.
City Manager, would you like to?
I hear you. And I would, I would just like to remind the council two things. One, fiscal hardship is not one of the criteria. And I fully understand the applicant's position. But the other part is, I don't know if you're aware, but the B-3 Codes do encourage density. So we need to revisit the codes. We need to revisit our street widths, and we absolutely need to revisit our fire safety. What we will create is an exacerbation of an issue in areas where we didn't have issues before as more accessory dwelling units pop up, as we try to keep our character in some of our districts. So it's not just Piney Ridge. We really have to take a good, hard look if that was really our intent. It may have been an unintended consequence.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other comments before we vote? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Mayor Protim Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
So with a three to two vote, city fail, city attorney that fails?
It does fail. Four affirmative votes are required by statute because of the protest that was filed.
All right, so Resolution 2022-92 fails, and do we need to do something with 10B?
I don't believe any actions required for 10B, because the variances weren't approved, the replat can't be approved.
Okay. With that, counsel, is there any other questions for the city attorney? We are, we've already taken care of 10C and 10D, so we are on item number 11. Councilmember Kirkland?
Motion to adjourn.
It is 8:28. I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland to adjourn. Do I have a second? And I have a race to the seconds. It's 8:28, and we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel, for your time. Thank you, staff, and thank you to the applicant.